Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, September 19th, 2022. Roll call.
Yes, good evening. Mr. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here, sir.
Mr. Kleiman.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Present.
Mr. Shebeck. And I am here, the Council Representative Scott Barr.
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with public hearings. The first item on the public hearing agenda is a conditional use permit request for the religious institution for the church in Cleveland in an I-2 district. If the applicant could please come forward, your name and address and an overview, a presentation for the public as to what you're looking for this evening.
My name is Yan Chalain.
Yeah, my name is Tuo Wong.
We are the representative for the church in Cleveland. And for the purpose for this application, it is really for the religion use, the permanent use for that. And then for the permanent growth for our church. So we are looking for a permanent location here to serving the sins, living in the Twinsburg area. So that's why we're looking for this place to have the Sunday gathering, to support and to serve with.
All right. Thank you. It's opportunity for anybody in the community, if they have anything that they'd like to say either on behalf or against the request this evening for this conditional use permit. Now is your opportunity to come forward. Seeing no one, you may have a seat. We'll get back to you in the regular portion of the meeting and we'll see if we have any questions for you regarding that. Thank you. The second item on the public hearing agenda is a request for a conditional use permit for home occupation for raw hard firearms in the R4 district. If the applicant can please come forward, name and address and overview for the public as to what you're looking for this evening.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Mark Nacastro. The address is 1713 Pine Bark Place, obviously in Twinsburg. Overview: Been an owner of a firearms FFL company since 2018, co-owner. I have a full-time partner. The main business that we hold is down in Mineral City, Ohio, just south of Canton, New Philadelphia area. We have an outdoor range, store down there, storefront that we've opened this year. And this is really to expand a little bit up into this market. Since I live here, a lot of the folks that I talk to and work with as far as training, I'm a certified instructor for the NRA for pistol and rifle. I'm also a range safety officer. So a lot of the folks that I talk to and people that would be potential customers for me have to come down to Mineral City to make a purchase, ATF rules. So would like to expand that to be able to do the sales out of my house.
All right. Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak on this item, either for or against. Any comments? Seeing no one, we'll get back to you in the regular meeting agenda. Third item for public hearing is the Public Facilities District Hearing of Twinsburg City Fire Department for the training facility. Applicant could please come forward, name and address and an overview for the community.
Tim Morgan, I'm the Fire Chief, 10069 Ravenna Road in Twinsburg. And the project we've undertaken here is just to develop a local training facility for our personnel to utilize onsite. Ultimately, we're stacking a couple shipping containers on the back parking lot just to utilize for our training purposes. The intent here is just to, as economically as possible, make sure we keep our personnel trained and of course balance that against the concerns of our neighbors. But when we start to consider the training for our fire personnel in fire tactics and all those kinds of things, rescue techniques, we really start to limit our abilities when we have to factor in travel time and rental of facilities elsewhere. So we're trying to develop something here locally that while we can use kind of at the spur of the moment, as time allows, and again, just try to make our department, our personnel as ready as possible to meet the needs of the city.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community, if anyone would like to come forward and make a comment regarding this, now is the opportunity. Seeing no one, we'll come back to you in the regular portion of the meeting. It's 7:10, so we'll close the public hearing portion of the agenda and we'll get into the work session. The first item on the agenda for the work session is the site plan for the accessory structure for October Sun Studion Art Gallery. Applicant could please come forward, name and address and an overview of your request this evening.
First of all, I'm very nervous.
Don't be nervous.
My name's Jeannie Henderson. I live at 2633 East Aurora Road, and my intent is to have a building, a structure in my backyard that would facilitate a classroom and possibly a gallery. It could, you know, change depending on what event we're going to be having. I know that the structure is larger than what is permitted usually, but the smaller version would not accommodate or facilitate what I need to do. What we're doing is I'm creating an entire backyard where the entire yard is going to be an art garden, and it culminates into the building itself. And it has the barn doors and a ramp to allow for handicap accessibility since I'm not able to do that with the house. And I don't know what else to say.
Okay, that's all right. That's good. We'll have some questions, I'm sure, and you can let us know. We can fill in the blanks. So on the site plan that was submitted, there's two setback dimensions shown for this new accessory structure. One was easy to see, that was five feet off the rear yard. The side yard was hard to tell on here. It appears that it's 10 foot. I just wanted confirmation that that was what you were.
Right, they came and they measured it for me.
So it is 10 foot?
It's, yeah.
There's a number there.
I think there's, one is 12 and one is 10.
Okay. Maybe that side yard is the 10 foot, so that would be okay. This site plan shows no new paving or anything, so they're just going to walk through the grass area?
Well, it's going to become a garden.
Or paths that you put in, but there's no concrete paving that's going in back there. Okay.
Well, there might be stepping stones and that kind of.
That would be okay. And that could be something that as you develop the landscaping, but it's really like a permanent hard surface that we're concerned with. If you had, you'd need to show that, and since there was none, that was the request. So that's fine. David, comments or questions?
Ingress and egress is going to be from 82 onto the driveway?
Yes.
Do you think that as hopefully this gets more popular, that's going to present a problem?
I thought about it. There is local parking that's not too far. The T-room is just at the corner. It's not even a three-minute walk, so they could park at the square. If it became an event that, you know, people were coming and going, we could offer, you know, like a shuttle or something like that. I think my driveway is, we tried this out, the driveway is wide enough where, you know, we can get about, you know, three or four cars to park off onto the side. And we're heading up, I think it's three or four cars that can fit in the back. And if I have an event, most of the time it'll have a beginning and ending time. So at the end of the time, then they can just leave the way they came in. And getting out of that drive is actually pretty easy. The timing of the light, it's just perfect.
You've talked to the neighbors?
I talked to my neighbors, the spa and the, my neighbors that are next door, it's an apartment complex, a three apartment thing. They're fine. They're actually, and the T-room, very excited. He's like, this is going to become a destination place. My neighbor on the other side, we've talked, you know, a little bit, and I've mentioned it, he hasn't said anything negative to me. It's just that we're, I just moved there, so I don't really know them very well. But I haven't had any negative, in fact, I'm getting a lot of interest and a lot of positive responses.
Great. That's all I have.
Great. Yeah, I guess, so how many people will populate during classes or that you would expect?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to say. I would say I could max out at 25, but I don't ever see that happening. Maybe 10 or 15, depending on what it is that I'm doing. Yeah, it's not that large of a classroom space in the back, so I want people to be comfortable, and I'm not really going to know until.
You open.
You know, it opens. And I have, once the garden is created, there's going to be places where we can have outdoor art experiences. It's for art healing and art, fun art experiences and artist training.
So I guess, I guess if there's 25, maybe that's a high estimate, but if there's 25 people, would that be 12, 15 cars? It seems like there's not enough parking. That's what I'm worried about, just for you in general, getting access.
Yeah, I was hoping that maybe I could strike a friendliness with the spa.
Yeah.
Because they have a lot of parking spots. I haven't gotten that far yet, though.
That's mainly it. Electrical, is there any, so I assume it's going to be.
After it's all set, then I have to come back and get a permit for, to dig a trench from the cottage to the garage so that I can have electricity in there.
Okay.
But I figure I have to get this taken care of first.
When you get approval from this from the Building Department, based on the 12 by 24-foot size that is listed in the planning's report, that's 288 square feet. There's going to be a limit based on the Ohio Building Code as to the number of people you're going to be able to get in there, and I don't think it's going to be 25.
Okay, whatever it is, yeah. I can be compliant with it.
Yeah, and they'll surely let you know what that is, but that will limit you, and it'll be less, and that will help address some of the parking concern.
Yeah.
And just, I hope people will be able to turn around and go out facing 82, not backing out of your driveway.
Right. I have tested it a number of times, and it isn't that hard to back out, but what some people have chosen to do, and I'm not encouraging it, but they can go into my lawn and look around, you know, it's like, okay, I guess, as long as you don't get caught, I don't know. I don't know how that works, but.
Anything else?
Michael. Appreciate your commitment to bringing the arts, and I hope you have the problems of too many people.
Yeah, I don't think I will, but you know, you never know. I'll have to have more multiple events.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Scott, anything?
Just the interest of representing the city this evening. I see there's some notes on here about the stormwater management plan needing to be approved by the City Engineers Office, so that'll have to be reviewed. Additionally, accessory structures are subject to review and approval by the Architectural Review Board in the Building Department. So appreciative of the fact that we're at the beginning stages of all this. From the council side, the only concern I guess I would have has been expressed by Mr. Shipley, Mr. Kleiman, would that be a limitation on parking and just ingress and egress? That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you have a seat, we'll get back to you in the regular portion of the meeting agenda. The next item on the work session is the conditional use permit for the religious institution for the church in Cleveland. Applicant could please come back forward. Anything else you want to share with Planning Commission regarding your request for this evening?
I think we already provide the hot copy for the, or the electronic copy for the expanded parking, especially for the use, and we do some survey for the neighborhood, the understanding, the parking concern, actually, I would say the parking space. And so we understand that based on our current need, the largest gathering will be on the Sunday morning, which is outside the business hours. And then our planning or the gathering people will around like the 50-ish. So consider the car and the parking space right now they have. Right now, they have like the 24 reserved space for that unit, and which will be definitely feed what we need. But on the other hand, besides the 24 reserved space, there are like around 100 parking space which will be not used in the Sunday morning because it is outside the business hour. And we do some research regarding on that time. Based on our surveys, like the pretty much just three car will be present in that time. So I think this is just additional information for the council.
How many occupants are you expecting or planning on to attend the service on Sunday?
Around 50.
Okay. And again, this may be a question more for the Building Department when you move forward, based on the existing toilet facilities in the space may not be enough to accommodate the use of an assembly which you're doing, so be prepared, there may be something to do regarding that once they review it.
Yes.
That's all I had. David?
Nothing.
Craig?
No, it looks like you have tons of parking and welcome.
Michael?
Should I refer to either of you as pastor? Either you go with by pastor, I want to make sure I'm addressed by proper title.
We do not have a title. We just, we are the leading brothers, that's our title.
Serving or leading brothers. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Scott, anything?
I know everything looks in order. Appreciate your dedication to the city.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you have a seat, we'll get back to you in the regular agenda for our motion. The next item is the conditional use permit, home occupation for raw hard high firearms. Application could please come forward. Are there anything else that you'd like to share with Planning Commission regarding your application this evening?
Yes, I just wanted to make clear that this is not an intent to build like a big-box type environment. The number of clients that I would be seeing on any given basis would be maybe one or two per month. We're kind of a boutique shop, friends and family, referral type situation. And then the other side of that is really large on the safety and training. That's one of the things that I think is missing from the big-box stores is that they don't teach people properly. So as part of all of our transactions with our clients, it's sitting down with them and not only discussing the proper use of a firearm, but proper handling, storage, care for, making sure that all the things that you should do when owning a firearm are something that you are doing, you're trained in.
I thank you. Just for the record, can you provide confirmation that 1713 Pine Bark Place is your main or permanent residence? And by that, I mean not that you just own it, but that is where you live on a regular basis.
Yes, I live there.
All right, thank you. So I noted in the report and your submittal on your application that you talk about, besides the sale of firearms, that there are accessories that you sell as well. I didn't see ammunition, that word anywhere in here, and I'm curious as to whether or not you sell ammunition out of your home as well.
I do not.
So someone coming to, just to understand the setup, someone who's going to come and pick up a gun from you has already purchased it online and gone through all the safety checks and everything's set, and then they set up an appointment with you, and then they come to the home in order to acquire the.
The firearm?
The firearm.
They can actually come to my house. Typically, what happens is somebody identifies what they're interested in, will work with them on that, and then I order it from any of our wholesalers. When it comes in, I reach back out to them, they'll come, we'll set up an appointment, they come out, they fill out the Form 4473, I run their background check through the ATF and the NIC system. If they pass that, then we can go ahead and complete the transfer.
So they're not actually coming to your home to look at your collection in order to make a purchase?
No, we keep very little inventory. I do have some that, you know, we're able to buy some discounts, you buy multiple, we get a discount as a dealer, and I may have a couple, but no, we don't have, we have a store down in Mineral City for that.
All right, so no ammunition. And can you just touch base on how the firearms are secured on the premises when you get them?
Yes, I have several safes. Most of them are bolted to the floor. I have one in my basement, one in my garage, one in the garage is bolted to the floor, it's 3,500 pounds empty. If somebody's going to take it, they're going to need a bulldozer to get it out. But those are all secured, and the ATF ensures that I keep all of that properly locked, secured, and inventoried.
And safety features that you have at the house for security purposes?
I have multiple camera systems, I have a house alarm. I can say I have an attack cat, but she's not really all that aggressive, so.
Thank you. David?
It sounds like you've got all the bases covered, although I would prefer to see businesses like this in a commercial district versus in a residential area, but you have everything covered, so I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Craig? Um, I guess, yeah, I guess I probably don't have any questions. Yeah, appreciate it.
Michael? You're basically an NFA reception point for online orders and other orders. Is that a safe way to summarize it? Basically, we don't do a whole lot online. It's word of mouth, call me up, talk to me. Because I, like I said, we're really big on the safety thing. If I don't think that you're a safe person to own a firearm, or you don't display the proper respect for it, I'm not selling to you. Two other questions. What, so accessories, what's accessories? Optics, holsters, clothing. People see stuff that I have, and they're like, oh, that's really cool, where'd you get that? So I can probably get it for you a little better than you. K-cogs and stuff like that. Yeah, not many people ask for that, though. You have the facility also in Mineral City. Is there any intent of having instruction, courses of instruction, like on the law side? Like I know you're CCW holder, and as you know, there's a two-part training room. Are you planning on doing anything like that, or is it just firearms? So at my house? Yes. No, no, that would be just, it's, if you want to come purchase a firearm, I'm going to give you a proper instruction on the safety, the use, handling, and things like that. Classroom stuff, I usually work with North Coast Defense. And those guys are great. And anything, obviously, if I want to do something down at our shop down in Mineral City, we have an outdoor range that we can use for that. Sure. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
One question, forgot. So I guess shipment receipt, if you order these and they're shipped to your house, how is that protected? It's not, Amazon doesn't leave it on the doorstep, I assume?
No, they are not allowed to do that. I have to be present for any deliveries. It's a signature event, and I can, I have, very fortunate, the job that I hold is my primary job is the Chief Human Resources Officer for Farmers National Bank. I can work from home when needed. I'll know when anything is being shipped, and I can work from home and accept delivery. I would never leave anything like that out.
Okay, I was hoping, and then obviously with one to three transactions, you have ample parking for one person to show up.
Correct.
Easily, right?
Yes. And you have to keep a record of those forms anyway, and it's ATF regs, and you're subject to audit and inspection and all that stuff. At any time, no announcement necessary by the ATF, yes.
Just as a note for Planning Commission members, this is a conditional use request. We do have the opportunity to put conditions on this approval, such as if we wanted to limit the hours of operation, days of the week. I don't know if you normally do weekend business, if you're a nine-to-five or a 10-to-four, or if people come in the evening.
I don't know, I actually don't know if I put that in here. I might have put the hours in. You know what, I have to do that for the ATF application, which comes after this. I can limit those hours. Typically, it's going to be evenings during the week between six and eight, and then the weekends, but nothing early or late. I have a full-time job, so.
All right, well, we have the ability to do that, so if there's any thoughts, and I mean, we could, we could limit the number of transactions, you know, one person at a time, which is probably normal anyways. I don't think you'd want multiple people there at one time based on what it is, but it's just something to consider. If you have any interest in that, then you need to let me know to include it in the request, so. Yeah, you would think you'd limit one transaction, maybe not past nine or 10, whatever time you want to make it in the evenings. Well, you're. Want someone showing up at midnight.
Yeah. Well, I'd be restricted by that anyways because the NIC system isn't going to be available for me beyond nine o'clock.
So, but you're planning on not doing it beyond eight o'clock in the evening?
No, maybe eight-thirty if there was a special situation, but no, I'm not doing these things at ten o'clock at night.
Yeah. And as you said, the system that you have to get, tie into isn't available at that time, so. Anything else? Scott?
Pardon me. The, I mean, I guess I can appreciate the boutique nature of this. I think there are plenty of private firearms transactions that go on every day, regardless of whether or not we agree or disagree with that, the fact that you're doing it the right way. I guess I would applaud that effort. And certainly, you have the education and pedigree to back up what you're doing. So as long as you satisfy these folks, I have no issue. Thank you.
I did want to just finish off with one last comment that I thought that the application that you provided and the information was very nicely laid out, explaining many of the things that I asked you to touch on just for the record, and it's still in the record even here in printing, but as far as the safety and your training, your background for you and your partner, and I thought you handled it very well in what can be to some, obviously, a controversial type of thing, but I thank you for your thoroughness in what you provided us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
If you have a seat, we'll get back to you here in the regular portion of the agenda.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Chief, you want to come up for item number four, the accessory structure request for the Twinsburg City Fire Department?
Absolutely.
Anything else specifically you would like to share with us regarding this evening's request?
Only that we hope to improve on the structure as time allows and finances allow, including adding additional openings in the box, in the containers themselves to simulate doors and windows, stairways to get to the upper, upper container, and then maybe even a roof simulator, an angled pitched roof simulation. And of course, it would be our intent to do that all in a way that is, looks as pleasing as possible. It will be, you know, a training tool for us, so, and the budget is what it is, so I can't go beyond what that allows me, but we hope to just continue to develop this. Ultimately, long-term, I hope this is a temporary thing, and that maybe there's enough pressure from people that don't like looking at it that we build something more permanent in another location. But again, just trying to economize and do what I can with what I have available to me.
And for the record, no live fire used for training exercises.
No live fire would be done in these structures.
Thank you. David?
Do you have a yearly cost for how much it costs now to send your personnel out to whatever training facility they're going to?
It really depends on the length of the training and the number of people, and whether the people are on duty at the time or off duty and working overtime hours, so I.
Roughly speaking, I mean, you must have some historical numbers.
Roughly speaking, I think our training budget for this last year was $20,000, $25,000, and that was just, that covers the tuition. That doesn't necessarily cover the hours, that's obviously handled under the payroll line item, but that's a good question. I've not actually totaled up those hours specifically to see what we spend on that, but the part we're really, this really helps us in is the fact that the travel time. You know, if we have employees traveling on city time, we have to compensate them. And, you know, the closest facility is Tri-C West, so that's a 45-minute drive one way, allow for traffic, you know, two hours of travel time for maybe a couple hours of training. The Portage Lakes Career Center is probably the next closest. That's, again, a long drive, Canton Township Fire Department. So by having it right here locally, it just eliminates that, that cost for the large, in large measure.
Okay. I would very much like to see those costs at some point, to have a better idea what the cost-benefit analysis of that, so you don't know what your return is. It could be cheaper, it may not be cheaper, we don't really know that. Have you reached out to other fire departments locally to see what they're doing for training, and are they going to the same places?
They're dealing with the same struggles, really. Some of them, in fact, I reached out to Steve, Shebeck on this. Of course, the Soul and Power Department has a different budget than ours, so they have some more capability in that regard. But a lot of departments are just struggling with ways to provide quality training for their personnel on a regular basis.
Okay.
And.
What is Solon doing for their training?
Well, I, I know recently they've rented out the Tri-C facility, the training facility, and sent personnel over there. And they, they do makeshift training as well within their district. We, we attempt to do the same thing. We've, whenever the opportunity arises, we look into the possibility of using acquired structures to do a training in. We're often limited by how much time the building owner wants to allow us. We'll often get requests, and we'll start looking into it. And then, all of a sudden, they, the, the building owner says, well, we're going to tear it down tomorrow, or the next day. And well, we can't fit it into the schedule, and so it doesn't happen. Proximity to other structures becomes an issue. Proximity to power lines becomes an issue, especially if we're going to the, the length of doing an actual live burn in one of the structures. And then making the structure safe, so we have to make sure the utilities are disconnected. Have to make sure asbestos is evaded. We have to make sure that, that, you know, that there's no leans against the property, and that, all those kind of things just take time and, you know, administrative time that I'm, it's, it's just a struggle for us to accomplish.
Sure.
We, we press for it when we can, but it's fully, especially in, you know, years ago, we, we did it on a regular basis, but it's becoming increasingly difficult to find those structures available to us.
I wonder if it's possible, because it sounds like everything is roughly 45 minutes or an hour drive, and since we're in a major population center, to talk to Solon, Hudson, Macedonia, Aurora, Reminerville, and maybe work on something that's more regional to have it up here. Maybe we could host it, you know, or build something as a permanent structure? Be great to see if we can get all the communities together, so we can share in those costs and make it much easier for them to drive 10 or 15 minutes versus 45 minutes, and that would save everybody money.
Certainly. We would certainly make this structure available for the neighbors if they want to come and make use of it. I, I don't envision that being, at least in the, in the short term, something that happens a lot, because it's not very well-developed at this point. But there have been those discussions. Every discussion of regionalization starts to incorporate a different group of people in the, in the sandbox, and it just, you know, we, we end up with county lines and things that get in the way, and, you know.
Yeah, I realize it's, it's bigger than this conversation, but we really need to do that, because tax dollars are getting really, really scarce.
Yes.
And we need to start sharing more resources, and this may be a really good way to start that, especially with something as positive as you guys getting all of your personnel trained.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's what I want to hear.
Thank you, David. Craig?
So, I mean, I guess just from your comments with Dave, I mean, we're not approving the budget here, right? I mean, that's something that.
Yeah.
You're voicing a concern, but we don't rule on that.
Correct. I mean, they're just points of, of conversation, interest to, for them to take to heart. But yeah, basically, the review and approval this evening is for the site plan for the location of the training facility.
I mean, they're there right now, right?
They're actually there, and.
I drove back here, but I came here. They're sitting there. Well, I did go back, and said, well, authorized personnel, but, oh, and as far as I could.
Yes, that is correct.
I mean, is there a height limit? Like, they're stacked, so like 20 feet.
Correct.
Does that exceed our?
Nothing, nothing regarding the accessory structure heights in, in the report provided by, by the city planner, so I'm going to say that there should be no issue with that.
I think the setbacks are all sufficient to not cause any problems as well.
Yeah, they're pretty significant. And there's limited viewing of it. You have to really look for it if you're driving by to see it.
Yeah, yeah, certainly from the street. We do have a concern with our neighbors next door, Norbert Glenn, but there's some blockage by the tree we have over our dumpster in the back. And of course, they have some pine trees that they've planted recently in their landscape plan, that as they fill in that, will help screen of viewing from Norbert Glenn.
And that all shows on that site plan that was submitted. It's about 72 feet from the property line also.
And then I guess, training will be done during the day, not?
Most of it will be done during the day. There are some requirements for NFPA compliance and ISO ratings and things of that nature, who would incorporate night, night training. So that, that would happen periodically.
In Harbor, I guess, yes, that's the retirement community, right?
Yeah.
So that maybe just be a little bit of an obstruction to them. Is there any, so the purpose there, there's no lighting, obviously, for this. You'd want a dark, dark atmosphere.
Yeah, there's no lighting, there's no.
Exterior lighting on whatever you would use in a normal.
Portable lighting that we would take with us.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it looks very pretty, but it's.
Well, we do, we do commit to painting it at some point in the future. Maybe we'll do a contest on picking the color, but.
Camouflage.
Artist, maybe to put some murals on the side of it.
That'd be nice. Okay, thank you.
Michael?
Chief, what kind of training? So no live fire?
No live fire, so hose movement, search and rescue, bailout procedures. Actually, because of the heights, we can maybe do a little bit of repelling off the top. But just, really, there's a number of, of different kind of training scenarios we can work through. It just won't include fire. We do have a theatrical smoke machine that we could smoke the space up on occasion and use that, but, you know, the, again, the darkness of the, the container itself, we, we'll probably, we'll accumulate some pallets and maybe a little bit of plywood and things of that nature to create mazes and obstacles and things of that nature inside. And of course, the intent is to store those supplies inside when they're not being utilized.
You mentioned hose movements. So are we talking about water running through the hoses?
Yes, yes. We've got them set up in such a way that water should drain out the doors. They're a little higher on the, on the nose end, so the water should drain out the doors and then go into the parking, it, it's on the parking lot surface already, so it should be gathered by the storm drain. And it'll, it'll just be water.
Are you going to train on any foam?
We do not intend to train with foam. Right now, there's an issue with foam in general.
Right.
Or the, at least the A triple F, Class A foams are okay, but there's an expense to that, so maybe on occasion, we'll use a dishwasher detergent or something like that to degrade the bubbles. We also use a, we use an additive called F-500 also in our firefighting, and it's, that's naturally biodegradable, so that, that would happen on occasion.
Just following on questions that I heard from my colleagues about hours. Is there going to be anything with loud audio, like loud, loud halers or anything like that? Sound like there would, I'm just asking questions.
No, I, I don't think it will be anything like that. I'm, again, periodically, we might do something like that. I, I don't think it'd be anything that would happen on a regular basis.
Thanks for coming to this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
I applaud your creative use of shipping containers, so we can properly fund a new or completely remodeled station.
It, it, yeah. It's really an interesting thing, because a lot of people are wanting to build with shipping containers, but they're not yet recognized in the Ohio Building Code for their structural stability and all those kind of things. So it's, it's a bit of a hot potato that's out there. But in our case, we're not, it's not going to be an inhabited structure, and we're, we're certainly not going to put anywhere near the weight in those that they're, they're built to store, so, again, just trying to be creative.
I mean, I guess that's one question I have, is sort of stacked, I mean, they're designed to stack on each other, and they're secured and?
They're, they are bolted together at this point. They are not attached to the ground. We've not taken that step, just in case something happened in the approval process that I'm working through retroactively. But I think the, the weight of the containers themselves, under normal circumstances, should, I, I don't envision there being a problem.
They'll be grounded and lightning rods and?
I'm sorry?
Some light, lightning rods and grounded, it just seems like it'd be.
Well, I hadn't contemplated grounding them for electrical, or for lightning strikes.
I guess maybe you don't do your, your training in the.
I suppose it could, yeah, yeah.
Stay out of it in the storm.
We could probably, it wouldn't take much to drive a grounding rod into the yard that's two feet away and attaching it with some cable.
Surely worth looking into.
Absolutely. Appreciate the suggestion.
All right. Thank you, Chief. If you want to just have a seat, then we'll get back to you in the regular portion of the agenda. The next item on the work session is the industrial use determination request for commercial post-secondary trade and technical schools. The applicant could please come forward, name and address and overview of your request this evening.
Hello. My name's Nicole Cumberlander, and I am one of the owners of the Paul Mitchell Technical School, and this is Tammy Moranis. She is our Director of Compliance. And we are here to talk to you about utilizing the industrial space building. We have been a business here in Twinsburg for over 20 years, have done very well here. The community has really been accepting and, and helpful. We've trained a lot of students here and the community, and we're actually a regional school, so a regional technical facility. So, we get a lot of people that come through. We are ready to move on to another space, a larger space. The space that we have identified is an industrial use. We need that larger space for new programs. About a large part of the building that we use is for administrative offices, and that's where we create and develop our, our training curriculum. So about, about a good portion of it is office space, but then the other space will be utilized for our adult clientele and guests that come in. It also is helpful, because the parking is, we, we do utilize quite a bit of parking, and those buildings accommodate our parking needs. And it just really works out well for, for the use that we need.
Thank you. Just as a note for Planning Commission members, I think Lynn did a very nice job in her report explaining that this is not a similar use determination request, because this use is permitted in, in other districts, but there is the opportunity, based on the code, to do a comparable use request when it's in the industrial zoning district. And that's what's outlined in, as was presented and, and in the information that we received. So, just to differentiate that for, for you, if you didn't pick up on it. I have no questions specific. David?
I apologize. I don't have that info.
You didn't? We can.
Yeah, I guess I just welcome you, the expansion. It looks like there's plenty of parking available. That'd be the first, my concern, but it looks like, I don't see the numbers here, but looking at the picture, it looks like there's a lot of. So, I don't have any questions. I think it's a good use of the building.
Michael?
I feel like I should call the dean and the vice dean. Is this going to be an addition?
We've been called worse.
So I buy, and I will continue to. Is this going to be an addition to facilities you already have?
No, it would be in Luell.
I think it's awesome. We'll call it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott?
I did have it, sorry. Oh, okay. Comments or questions?
Let's move them.
Let's make it happen.
Are you still over here on the corner over by?
Yes, right in.
So you're going to move from there to this facility?
Correct, correct.
Scott?
No, I think this is, it's wonderful. I'm glad to see that things are going well enough that you are expanding. As somebody that owns a business that is in the trades, I applaud any and all efforts to continue to educate our folks into those types of programs, because we desperately need that, so. I applaud, I applaud the efforts.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for staying in Twinsburg.
Oh, absolutely. We love Twinsburg. Absolutely.
Thank you. If you have a seat, we'll get back to you here in a few minutes in the works, in the regular meeting portion of this evening's agenda. So it is 7:50, and we will start the regular meeting agenda. The first item is the approval of the June 27th, 2022 minutes. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes?
Move to approval without reading.
I'll second.
All right, seeing none, we'll accept them as, as submitted. Thank you. The site plan request for the October Sun Studio and Art Gallery, if you could please come back up to the podium. Anything else that you'd like to share with Planning Commission?
I wish I could think of a good question or a good line here, but I am excited to be able to, to use my talents and contribute them to this community. I've only been here since February, and the warmest welcome that I could have ever received is just from the, from my church that I belong to, the neighbors that, you know, I've gotten to know, the art club at the library, the senior center there, you know, very embracing and encouraging me to, you know, participate as an artist. And I'm just having a great time. I didn't realize we had this gem here. So I'm, I'm honored to be able to offer this to the city.
Thank you. Anything else, David?
No.
Craig?
No.
Michael?
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted site plan for October Sun Studio accessory building, 2633 East Aurora Road, permanent parcel number 64-00751, date stamped received August 17th, 2022, I move for final site plan approval with the following condition: approval of the stormwater management plan by the city engineer.
Second.
Second by Craig. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Approval for zero. You did just fine this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item on the regular meeting agenda is the conditional use permit request for the religious institution for the church in Cleveland. Come back up to the podium. Anything else you'd like to share with Planning Commission this evening?
I would say it would be our pleasure, you know, to join the Twinsburg, and I think since even for myself, it is very enjoy the community, and we'll be very honored. We can contribute to societies. So, yeah, I think that is my thing.
Thank you. Very nice. David?
Nothing.
Craig?
Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you.
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted conditional use request, an application for the church in Cleveland, 2057 East Aurora Road, Unit 2, date stamped received July 25th, 2022, I move that Planning Commission recommend to city council the issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a religious institution in the I-2 limited industrial district. Second?
Second.
David? Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
So this approval is for a recommendation to city council. They have the final say in this, but it is a positive recommendation and should be on the agenda for the next city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the conditional use permit home occupation request for Rawhide Firearms LLC. Any other comments or anything to share with Planning Commission this evening?
I just want to tell you guys, I appreciate the organization, and they're really great questions, so, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Nothing for me.
Craig? Michael?
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted conditional use request, an application for Rawhide Firearms LLC, 1713 Pine Bark Place, date stamped received August 24th, 2022, I move that Planning Commission recommend to city council the issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a home occupation for a federal firearms license in the R4 residential district.
Second.
Second by Michael. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Approval four, nothing. Again, this is a recommendation to City Council. They have the final say, but it is a positive recommendation, and they should have this on their next agenda.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item is the site plan request for the accessory structure for the Twinsburg Fire Department. Anything else, Chief, that you'd like to share with Planning Commission this evening?
I believe I was embarrassed a moment ago when Mr. Kleiman asked me about the cost incurred for training to this point, that I couldn't come up with an answer. But as I was sitting back there contemplating, the answer is, I don't really have that to show you because we haven't been getting the training that we need. Because, again, trying to stay within overtime and with other budgetary constraints, we've not done as much training as I wish we would.
Makes a lot of sense.
So...
It does.
Hopefully this helps.
Yeah, absolutely.
I believe it will. Yes. David, anything else?
No.
Michael?
Thank you.
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted site plan for the City of Twinsburg Fire Station 1, Training Facility Accessory Structure, 10069 Ravenna Road, date stamped received August 18th, 2022, I move for final site plan approval.
Second.
Second by Craig. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Cohen? Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Approval four, nothing. Thank you for coming this evening.
It's been a pleasure. My first experience. It's been educational. Thank you.
Hopefully, we weren't too rough on you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item is the industrial use determination for Paul Mitchell School. Paul Mitchell, the School Cleveland. Anything else you'd like to share with Planning Commission this evening?
No, just, you know, we've had a great experience in Twinsburg, and we'd love to continue that experience.
David?
Nothing.
Craig?
No.
Michael?
I've got my own hair, but sometimes my wife thinks I could do a better job. I have a feeling this is done. She may be sending me over for...
I'll second.
We will welcome you.
Can I second that?
Do I need to include that as a motion? No, okay. All right. I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted comparable industrial use request and application for Paul Mitchell, the School Cleveland, 2300 Edison Boulevard, date stamped, I'm sorry, dated September 1st, 2022, I move that Planning Commission authorizes the commercial post-secondary trade and technical school use in the industrial zoning districts.
I'll second.
Second by David. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Approval four zero. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Communications and miscellaneous next on the agenda. David?
I don't know if it's directly related, but I had a chance to do a project yesterday with some high school kids that approached the city a few years ago about putting in a single-track mountain bike trail. So it's too bad Lynn's not here to talk about that. So they, a former mayor connected them with me, and I connected them with Parks and Recs and Service Department. And they put in a really cool little mountain bike trail right off of Old Hickory, behind the community gardens. And I do ride that from time to time and reach out to them. And I rode it about two months ago and noticed that it was, needed a little bit of help. And after that huge windstorm that we had back in June, I think it was, very large tree blocked the exit. So we got together, they walked me through the trail, we talked about doing a community cleanup and trail build, which we had yesterday, was promoted through the Parks and Recs Department, several social media outlets. And a lot of kids showed up from the high school, which is great. Most people didn't even know about the trail. It was great. We cleaned everything up. We, so if anybody wants to check that out, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to take you guys on a ride or even a walk. It's terrific, and they want to do more. And it's wonderful to see high school kids getting together and doing something that is positive fun, all those things. So I just want to shout out to all the kids at Twinsburg High School that did it.
Very nice. Thank you. Craig?
No, I have nothing to share.
Michael?
Number two, thank you.
Scott?
Nothing additional, just for the interested parties. The next City Council meeting is a week from tomorrow. It's going to be Tuesday, the 26th, I believe. Twenty-sixth. So if those items make it on the agenda, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Twenty-seventh? Twenty-seventh? I just looked at my calendar.
It is...
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yep.
September 27th, 7:00 PM, Council Chambers. Thank you, Mr. Kleiman, for the correction.
So obviously, with not Lynn here this evening, we really can't get an update on what's coming based on for when the next Planning Commission meeting would be. So keep an eye on your emails to see what's happening. And if there is not an agenda, Lynn will let us know. The next meeting currently is scheduled for October the 17th.
I am on training that week. So just to give a heads up, if it's going to be Monday the 18th.
Monday, the, Monday, the, Monday, the 17th.
Regardless, I have drill weekend, the weekend before, and I'm going to be in training that entire week.
Can you just send an email off to Lynn and let her know that?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's one of those, I got to get it now, or I'll never be able to get it, kind of trainings.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Need a motion to excuse Mr. Shebeck from this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Michael, second.
Second.
Craig, any discussion on his absence?
Hope he's doing some fun.
Yeah, exactly. Roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Officially excused. Saying that, we'll have adjournment at 8:01.